Select Boards Meeting, June 4th, 2018. In attendance, Chairman Joe Didi, Russ Fox, Doug Moguln, Carl Steinhardt, and Cindy Pendleton.
All right. Good afternoon. We're going to go in executive session, and we will reconvene in open session shortly after. So it looks like we're going executive session for exemption number three. Move to go in executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, and that the Chair declare that an open meeting may be detrimental.
The one that I put in there?
Oh, we have a bunch of them. We have a series of them.
But we're only doing three.
Effect on the bargaining position of the body, and to reconvene in open session. Move to go in executive session, which is, yep, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, and that the Chair declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the body, and to reconvene in open session. That's it, right? Joe Didi, aye?
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moguln, aye. How are you?
You're on.
Good. Welcome back, everyone. Back in open session. And let's see. At 6:25 is public comment, so I guess we'll start there. I have a question. Mr. Lawler, welcome back.
Thank you, Doug.
How's the curveball?
Great. I'm up to about forty-seven miles an hour now.
Okay, good. Where were you before?
Fifty.
Nice. Good to see you back.
Yeah.
That's fine. It's all good.
Do you want, might want to just announce that we're recording the meeting?
Oh, yeah. According to Russ Fox, we're recording the meeting, so everyone understands that. All right, so public comment first. Let's go. Who's up? Nobody. All right. Back to normal. First up at 6:30 is a hearing for Southwick Motors LLC, reissuance of Class II Car Dealership License. Come on up, sir. How you doing today?
Good. What's up?
Good. I'm Joe Didi. I guess I'm Chairman today.
Hey, Sideways.
What's that?
The sideways papers you're going to want to take a look at.
Okay. I'm going to keep talking first. All right. How you doing?
Good.
Your name again?
Tony Novak.
Hi, Tony. I'm Joe. That's Doug, and that's our little guy, Russ over there in our corner. Got it. Yeah. So I have to read this first, correct? And then I have to look at the sideways papers?
Well, somebody requested.
This was input? Is that what this is? Oh, boy. All right, so basically, we have to have a public meeting in regards to that license, and so on and so on. I haven't done one in three years, back when I used to be clerk. So we're going to stumble through this.
No worries.
All right. Notice is here by given that the Southwick Select Board pursuit to MGL Chapter 140, including but not limited to Section 58, will conduct a public hearing on Monday, June 4th, at or around 6:30, or close, in the Select Board's Conference Room, Town Hall, 454 College Highway. That was a good Chevy motor. Southwick, Mass., 01077. To consider the reissuance of a Class II Car Dealership License at 479-483 and 485 College Highway. The proposed license would be issued to Southwick Motors Anthony C. Novak. The Select Board can approve the request to, as proposed, or amend at their direction. The Planning Board has approved a site plan of five parking spaces for customers and thirty-five parking spaces for cars for sale. Deed and plot plan are on file, and the Select Board's office and location to be licensed is at 479-483-485 College Highway. Description of the premises is as follows. Fundage on College Highway is approximately two-hundred-and-twenty feet by a hundred-and-fifty feet deep. The premise has a cement block building approximately twenty by fifty-two by twenty deep, with a two-bay garage. Interested parties are encouraged to attend the hearing or submit written testimony. Joe Didi, Chairman, Russ Fox, Vice Chair, and Doug Moguln, Selectman. I should probably say clerk, but that's fine. All right. So first thing I need to do is open the meeting. So the meeting, are you in motion?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the meeting is opened. We used to have a little thing that told me what to do. All right. So I believe we'll discuss it, then we ask for public comment, and then go from there. All right. So we got a letter I should probably read. I hate reading, from the Planning Board. Previous plan approved, something findings, signed by somebody. Oh, Al Sessler. The Planning Board met on Tuesday, August 16th, 2016. Notice is an old one. Site plan is dated March 12th, 2007. The applicant applies for used car license, Class II. The Planning Board is comfortable with the twenty-five spaces for vehicle sales and fifteen for customer service, which we then modified here, I believe, for Mr. Peon back in the day. Noted the planned date is September 28th. Requires all parking spaces on College Highway to have a barrier or landscaping to prevent vehicles from direct access to the roadway. Yeah. Those flower pots.
They were there for a week.
Yeah. Yep. That's a beautiful approved plan. See the flower pots I screamed about? They're still there. We're going to drag them out.
There's a picture behind that of what they suggested for the area.
Oh, there. Yep. Want to run the record, Mr. Moguln?
Yeah, I probably should. I just, for the record.
Yep.
This property is owned by the wife. I believe the controlling interest is the wife of the owner of Wally Computer, which is my employer. I don't feel it would be, have any impact on my decision-making process for this application.
Wonderful.
But I think, in the interest of full disclosure.
Yes. This way, if we do something stupid, you can get blamed with us. I appreciate that.
No matter what I do, sir.
Yeah.
No matter what I do.
That's wonderful. So nothing's changing, right? It's the same sales area?
Yeah.
The office in the back with the little window that used to stare at you? The mechanics room? Yeah. Restroom, the shop.
That's, that hasn't changed in a hundred years.
A hundred years. Absolutely. All right. I think that...
Russ, you'll bring up the thing in the back, right?
Yeah. I'm going to bring up a lot of things, because, you know, I'm a little confused here. On this one, it's got fifty-one sales, four employees, one handicap.
Right.
And then we're talking about thirty-five here.
We, we, we did adjust that.
We reduced it down to thirty-five. But now there's three lots here, correct?
Yes, there is. There's three parcels.
Do we have lines delineating that? And the separation between, is the Southwick Inn a separate parcel?
I don't know. I don't have...
Talking with John Wally, he gave me like a demarcation of where the, like, the back of the building.
Where he would like the cars.
The back of the building, I don't go beyond the back of the building, because that's Southwick Inn, and then he's got that wire fence.
Yes.
We're coming to that.
We're going to come to that one. But the other side, how much towards the karate place and stuff like that? Because all I got is this.
It almost goes almost all the way over to that karate place, if I recall.
Right.
But is, what's the parcel? Is that a separate parcel, too?
It is.
That building?
That's why there's the three parcels, so that...
Here, this is kind of divided up here. Right. So there's a parcel, that's a parcel, this is a parcel, and that's a parcel.
Okay.
So that's why, because it's one, two, three.
Two and three.
That's... So this little piece that comes over toward the inn?
Yeah.
Is, there's a, one of the spots is over on that, and then this is the front of Walt's, and then this is it, and this is, the karate building is right here.
Right.
Near the other side of it.
So, without having the numbers in front of us, they're listing three parcels. So one is the Southwick Inn, for about, ooh, twelve feet? I would, if I was going to guess, twelve, twelve to fifteen feet is the Southwick Inn line, right? If that's twenty-four feet to that, yeah. And then it's all of the old Walt's, and then that parking lot, so it's, so see that bump out?
Yeah.
Somewhere in here, I'm sure, is that line. Oh, that's probably right here. See it? So that line goes all the way down.
All the way down.
This line goes all the way down, so you got one, two, three parcels.
Okay. Well, then, we've got our building inspector here. Let me ask, Art, you know, as far as abutting another parcel, you know, setback requirements, things like that? I know as for a building, there would be...
So the bigger question is, how close can the cars be to, say, the, what is it? Southwick Inn? Is it okay if they, should there be an eight-foot spot, or is it okay to have that car close to the building? Because it is three parcels on the permit. It's not like it's three, it's not like it's a separate parcel. Is there an egress issue? Does a fire truck have to get all the way around the building? Does it matter?
I don't think it matters.
Okay. That's, that's pretty much what you're asking.
Right. That's, well, that's what I'm asking, is, is, is there supposed to be? Because we've been pretty lenient with classes, and we're not trying to pick on you, but we've been pretty lenient.
Yeah. You're just here to get torture.
And sometimes, people have taken it to the next step, you know? And when I see vehicles bumped up against another parcel, a building, and there's no stops there, it starts to raise issues of fire issues and safety issues that I don't know are being addressed.
Yeah. I'm not sure about that zone in particular, but I know we have, somewhere in our zoning ordinance, there's a prohibition about parking within fifteen feet of the property line.
Okay.
Right.
Well, that's, that's what I'm getting at. You know, we've been, again, pretty lenient, and, and, and by being lenient, the last time, when Mr. Peon was here, we talked about that barrier in the back, and I, I kind of asked in a nice way that it be addressed. I mean, we've spent tens of thousands of dollars across the street at the town green with the memorials of our veterans. It's the center of our community, and I, I thought we extended an olive branch that that would be addressed, and it, and it hasn't been addressed.
I guess I'd have to talk to John, because they're all his properties.
Right.
So I don't want to go modify his properties.
Right. And then, then the flower boxes that were required didn't exist.
The, no, they, they do. They're in the shop. I got them there.
Right.
So we're going to pull them back out.
We talked about that first.
Yeah.
Right. So it's, I, I guess my concern is that, you know, I'd like clarification and some research done through the Fire Department and your department, Art, on how close those vehicles can be to that other building, or there should be some sort of barrier, or curb stops, or, or something, for fire protection, or just for egress, you know? And then obviously, if the Planning Board wanted decorative boxes there, they, they should be there. You know, we shouldn't, you know, have to jump through hoops, but, but I, I certainly, unless someone's going to tell me how they're going to improve the rear, you know, I, I'm going to be very concerned about issuing this license.
Douglas?
I just, I would like to see something done with that, that fence in the back, because it's crazy. I think some of the zoning and the lot lines there are very confusing, because there was, there's three parcels, and going north, the numbers go up, so that's how you can tell what's what.
Oh, thank you.
But they were all pre-existing, non-conforming parcels to zoning, any which way. There was actually a third building in between Walt's and the Southwick Inn, the old Napa Building, remember? I mean, it's not that long ago. I even remember it being there, right? So I, it had been dressed up pretty well. I know that there was a rebalancing of the number of cars needed there. I, I haven't heard from the applicant yet. We haven't given them a chance to get tours in Edgewise yet. So as far as, you know, how many cars are going to be there, and what, what your plan is for how that's going to look, and certainly the planting in, in the front, that was a requirement of the Special Department of the Planning Board, obviously that has to be complied with.
Yeah.
And if you're going to do that, that's great. That's really all I have to say.
Okay. So I'm going to speak last. So give me your history, please.
Do you guys ever go into Granby?
Try not to. I'm trying to put a total there.
It's sketchy. You know Route 10 Tire?
Yeah.
And the motorcycle shop that sits back?
Yeah.
That's me. Landscaping on the...
All them cool cars in the back right now?
The classic cars?
Oh, those are...
What are you bringing here? Classic cars?
Nah, we're going to have mom pop cars, a few muscle cars. I'll bring them in selectively. But as far as landscaping, that's what I'm going to do. Ride, going to...
The place is very nice.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's why the town of Granby likes me, because I keep it nice.
And you see why they want you to keep it nice.
None of those got murdered by the hail, did they?
Nope.
What's his name across the street got murdered? The other used car guy across the street.
Oh, really? Nothing.
Douglas.
That's because of real steel.
Those cars have steel on them.
Yeah.
They're not like your Mustang.
No, no, no. Easy.
Oh, what were you talking, the other Cambridge House?
Right across the street from Cambridge House. Every one of them looked like they were in a golf driving range.
Yeah.
Yeah, those aren't, those aren't both your cars.
No, I know.
No, no, I know.
It was serious hail there.
Thought process to keep both places?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because that's primarily motorcycles up there, and muscle cars. But here, I'm going to do SUVs, four-wheel drives, trucks, more, you know, like a Lexus SUV, or a four-wheel drive Ford pickup truck.
And you realize no one's made it there since Walt's left?
Peon should have been making money.
Well, yeah. And I'm not busting, but just like, so you feel you'll be okay there?
Yeah.
Long-term, hopefully?
Yeah. Otherwise, I'm blowing a quarter million dollars right now.
Yeah. And inventory.
Yeah. Well, yeah, you did.
Yeah. Understood. So, so you have qualifications. That's wonderful. And I assume this is your partner in crime?
Oh, yeah. He's going to be my salesman.
You should see he's on milk clams. Got that. Okay. So, so the bigger issue, which you're not aware of, because, you know, you've only driven by there forever, is that the back fence line is, was kind of put in to stop people from cutting through, and we have the same exact story. You know, it's really, it's John's place. It's not, that's not yours, and...
Yeah, I was, I was going to try, you know, to me, it looks like a hazard. I was, you know, the diamond-shaped flags you get in string. I was going to try to make it very visible that it's not a cut through, so someone doesn't get killed going through there.
Right. And they did, I think, at first, Peon did try to, you know, flag it a little bit. Of course, when snow comes and winter comes, it gets moved, and everything gets plowed.
Yeah.
You know, the whole thought, actually, I think they maybe, did they even put a snowbank there? I think, maybe? When winter came? I don't know. I don't remember. But that's, it's been an ongoing issue, and it's a, it's a nice issue, I guess, but we just really want to see that cleaned up, and I, and, and I know you can't make that decision. I get that. You know, I get it.
Well, we, we're there Sunday. We've got, uh, leak blowers.
I heard you.
We clean up sand out.
Yeah.
So we clean up, trying to make it look better.
It's a beautiful piece. You're in the center of town.
Yeah.
You know, it's a win-win, and I hope, I hope you can do something there. But that was our issue, was the back, and the flower boxes.
Yeah, flower boxes, definitely.
And I know they go away in the winter. We get that, but it shouldn't be an issue where we have to beg you to bring them back out.
You and I, kind of a yard Nazi.
Yeah. And the other issue, like...
That's a technical term.
No, 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 yeah.
We know.
No, no, we know, we know.
Emphasis added.
Yeah. And it is a very nice-looking setup in Granby. Quite honestly, I stare every time I go by, you know?
Is that you that's there?
Yep. It is.
Yeah, and actually, some of those will be coming down, because the way we look at is, all the trucks on the side and back, and the mom vehicles on the other side, but then I got multiple muscle cars that'll be running through there.
Sure. Are you going to do the repairs there as well, or?
For most part, we're going, I'm going to try to be a step above some of the competition, so I'm going to buy stuff that already has, still has warranty, but like the muscle cars, I'll work on them there until they can pass inspection, then I'll put them on the lot. So, yeah, the two bays work out good for me, because I got two bays up the hill, and I'm overloaded with cars waiting to get...
Up the hill where?
God, living in Granville.
Oh, okay. Gotcha, gotcha. Understood. Nothing in Southwick. So, and that gets goofy, and I'm not going to talk for the building inspector, but there's a whole nother issue if you try to make that a...
Public garage. It's different. It's only for cars you...
Right. Just, just so...
Yeah, no thanks.
That's a whole different...
It's a whole different animal.
...kind of stuff.
Yeah, the first couple, there's, I got a '73 Mustang and a '65 Caddy going in there first.
Right.
So it's all cars, my cars, before I decide to zone.
Understood.
But, yeah, I'm not doing service for other people.
Okay. Wonderful. And, and, I understand what Russ is saying, and I would suggest if we want to move forward that, for the building inspector to get together and do a little bit of research to make sure he can park where he does park on that side, because it does get tight towards the Southwick Inn. I mean, I'm sure you don't mind guys flicking ashes under cars.
Yeah, I don't want that, then.
You know?
I don't want the Southwick Inn pulling in there parking, so I'll put cars strategically there.
That was the other thing. That's why they did it.
Right, right.
I'll put a couple cars there strategically, so that they can't cut through and park in front of the store.
Right. And most of the time, even like I drove by tonight, as everyone, remember this was coming up, they're all parked there today, but they stopped at the edge of that. You know, the, the regulars know where that parking line is, whether there's cars in front or not. But you're right, it's not stopping no one from coming through the front and parking.
Yeah, so I figure, you know, if you pick up trucks there, just kind of spin them around, so it's not a thoroughfare.
Right.
And then the muscle cars will stay in front, and then the grocery getters on the right side.
Yeah. I mean, that's my two cents, I know.
Yeah.
And I, and I understand your concern completely.
Right. You know I'm pro-business. I want to make a million dollars.
Oh, no. I don't want you to make a million. I want you to stay longer. Because that first million sucks, like you said, you got to put $250 up anyways, and nothing worse than watching money fly out the window.
Yeah, I've been watching money fly out the window up the street for a while.
Well, good, you're used to it.
Best way to make a small fortune in the car business.
Start with a big one, yeah.
Start with a large one.
Yep. So now I open it to the public. Does the public have any comment? See, that's nice about small towns, you know? We're the bigger pain in the asses. Okay. Ask the public. Talk to you gentlemen. The building inspector has promised me with that smile that he has, that he will look into that wall side and make sure that we're all happy.
So what's the total cars going to be?
The total cars?
They said he's got parking for up to thirty-five, but that's a lot of cars.
What do you think, Ken?
Twenty-five would be normal routine. Flip over that, try to have that many on staff. Otherwise, you don't have enough for people to look at. But initial get-go, twelve to fifteen, because it goes with all the money.
Sure, sure.
Correct. And, and that leaves room for customer cars in the back. And that was the other thing, so, you know, that, that's a total car count, correct, Douglas, of what's on the property? That's the, whatever it was, the thirty-five?
These are employee, right? See, it says sales, employee, and, and there's one handicap spot behind the building.
Right.
So they had, I didn't, I can't count that many.
No, I understand. But it's there. So fifty-one sales, four employees, one handicap brought up to...
And it never works out exactly like that, but it's...
Fifty-six. Right. But the actual...
It actually tends to go this way, right? It pulls in towards...
It does.
These cars don't fill in.
No. You're right. I've never seen that many. But the actual application is for...
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. And that's all in. Thirty-five spaces for cars for sale.
Right. Five for customers, and it said in the other thing it's...
It was forty.
And thirty-five.
Yeah, so it's, it's five and thirty-five, total forty.
Okay.
Spots.
It's more than enough.
Right. Well, that's what we're trying to be clear.
But just, because this shows fifty-one for sales.
Yeah, I think, I think in the other form that the planning board approved it, said thirty-five.
Right. Okay.
That seems like the more reasonable...
Yeah. And, and we do have an officer that comes through.
Yeah.[1318.12]
Yeah.
Actually, you better agree.
Yeah, and you know what? We've had some hiccups on that main road over the years. They've seemed to clean themselves up by themselves or go away.
Yeah.
Um, our guy's great, you know, as long as your book is, so where would your book be? This is a million dollar question, where would your book be?
It'll be there.
Doesn't go to your house in Granville?
No.
Really?
It's funny, Connecticut's totally different than Mass. In Connecticut, no book.
Really?
No, no, the book will stay there, there's a there's a lock and fire safe already.
Right, and that's where the book should be, and whoever comes in, it's there.
The only thing is weird, titles have to be there.
Yes.
Oh, boy, there's a car and a title there, oh, boy.
Or the titles with the bank or whatever, but.
No, the title.
The title has to be on the premises.
But if you have a financing company, floor planning your cars, they're still on the premises, the title?
I, you have to have title, any of the cars I have for sale have to have the titles.
Huh, interesting, whichever, yeah.
Usually, right now, all my titles are up in my safe in the house, but.
Right, understood.
Officer Wells, Miles.
Miles, right.
So yeah, they'll be on site.
Right, and of course, if the car's going on the road, the stickers have to be on it, we had another used car lot that didn't have the your warranty stickers after.
Oh, yeah, we had all that.
That whole dealer plate thing, you know?
Yeah, it's.
Yeah.
No problem.
Okay, not that we are concerned, but we're just telling you about the headaches that we've seen happen over the years. So now entertain a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Are you comfortable with our discussion tonight, sir?
I I I'm at the point, you know, again, I went through this with Mr. Piana and.
Yeah.
I thought we were making headway.
Yep.
This is the center of our community, we spent tens of thousands of dollars honoring our veterans across the street.
Yep.
I I'd like to make a motion to table for one week to have Mr. Lawler uh look into that and the fire chief look into it. And I'd also like to see if Tony can go to Mr. Wally to see if.
Come up with some kind of game plan?
That if if within a certain amount of time that we could remove a temporary barrier and put up maybe a movable barrier similar to what they have at the American Legion and metal.
The snow fences, the bicycle fences.
Bicycle fence, you know, that can be moved so you can plow, but it's a barrier, you know, but it looks.
It's real.
It's real, it it it's it looks aesthetically pleasing with the center of our town.
I'll give him a shout tomorrow, I know up front I'll have that all looking.
Right, and I I'm I'm sure because I've seen your place down in Connecticut, so I have a comfort factor there. And I I again, I I I'm not trying to pick on you, I'm just saying it it's been way too long. And I I don't know what else to do to get somebody to act, it's uh, you know, we we shouldn't have that in the center of the town, you know?
Douglas?
I'll go with the vice chair.
All right. So we're gonna put this off for one week.
When do we meet next week?
We do meet next, next Monday, right?
Yes.
Monday. So hopefully, we're gonna table this, make a motion to table?
That's my move.
Uh, eleventh, unfortunately, I'll be in Texas.
Honestly, I don't even need you here, I just need something in the next seven days when you're leaving for Texas Sunday. Good, so you got a few days. So we need just, you need to come in with either a letter or sit down, no, a letter stating what you think you can accomplish in that back wall. You know, which you're gonna have to go talk to John.
Yeah.
And 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 he's right, the bicycle fences are sixty, seventy bucks apiece. Just take a ride through the American Legion and you'll see bicycle fences everywhere. They just interconnect, like if you're having a a race through the center of a town, uh you'll see them all go up. It looks better than what you see today, which you don't even like.
I know, it's just.
Right, and it can still come down for snow removal, it can still be moved, I would say flower boxes, but that's a waste because you don't want flowers all through there, and I'm not trying to make that a mess, right? Versus, it's clean, it's done, and you can pop them all, put them in the back of your pickup and.
You can paint them.
You can do whatever you want with them, yeah. Um.
Give him a shout right now.
So a motion was made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
To table until next week and come up with something with him. Art, this week, if you have time, can you just review that?
I will.
Can, do you have his number?
No.
Okay.
I haven't seen anything on this.
No, no, I understand, yeah, and and it's cut and dry on our end, just wanna have you double check where he can park and make sure you guys are comfortable. And we'll look for a report from you this week, just saying, yeah, I met with him, I'm all set, I'm comfortable, and and we're good with that, and without you being here, we will vote on it next week and you'll be good to go.
Cool, I do not have business card on me.
That's fine.
I got it.
He's got, she's got his number, so.
Awesome.
Are you buying any metal in Texas?
No, my daughter's going to Texas A&amp;M, oh, it's killing me, three days of freshman orientation. And then one day of placement testing, then registration during the middle of my busy season.
I'm bored. Thank you for your time, sir.
Yeah, thanks.
Ma'am, I'm assuming you want that back?
Clerking.
Clerking. All right, building inspector, review of electrical inspection fee, sir, how are you tonight?
As well, thank you.
Very.
Does that? This folder or this folder?
I don't know what that thing Cindy's got in front of me, I don't.
Oh, that's my.
Action items or?
For six forty.
Okay. Anyways, we read it.
It's in your.
Yeah.
It's in your packet, I told you to keep up there.
Right.
Yep, inspection fees, electrical permits.
Right, that was the only outstanding issue, the board has already instructed council to deal with the other issue on the MOU.
Yeah.
So the only thing you had left over was to just go over the electrical inspection fees.
All right. And, what's your thoughts?
Um, well, you have him in the letter there, uh, the Westfield um electrical permit fee schedule was developed actually by the building department in West Springfield about two years ago. The the guys there did a thorough survey of all the surrounding towns.
Of course.
And uh decided it was time to raise their fees.
Right.
To kind of a middle of the road, so they didn't make themselves as the highest in the land. And Agwam saw that and they adopted the same thing as in West Springfield. And then Westfield adopted it as well, and my proposal to you gentlemen is that we do the same. Uh, it raises our fees a bit, um thirty percent in some areas and in a couple of them it knocks them down uh about ten percent overall, you know, maybe a twenty-five percent uh increase, but enough to um cover the other things that are associated with that letter that.
Do you know our previous fees off offhand, you know, like?
Yeah.
Single family, what do we use to charge?
Um, it was a per inspection, it it came out to about thirty bucks instead of fifty.
Okay.
So that's like.
Right.
Forty percent increase there.
Right, and did we, so did we do the same, so it says just a single family, was it one fifty? So now it's one fifty whether we inspect, would you end up inspecting three times anyways, don't you really?
Yeah.
You really do, yeah.
Service rough and finish required.
Right, so you're you're there.
Twenty-five, so it's now it's gonna be ninety-five dollars instead of seventy-five.
Right.
Well, it'd be fifty per inspection.
Right, so it'll be a hundred and fifty now, instead of the ninety.
Right, yeah, the way Westfield does it, uh there was a Westfield schedule attached there.
Right.
Single family is a a hundred and fifty, two family would be two hundred.
Right.
Um, and three family goes into the commercial rates, which are a little higher.
Right.
And that fee includes multiple inspections.
Correct, so yeah, commercial new construction one oh five, rough and finish inspections required, so that's two inspections, that one oh five.
Yeah, and if there are any other inspections required, um they would be at fifty dollars.
Fifty, right.
Per inspection.
Goes back down to the fifty.
Except for re-inspections, where the inspector uh finds a fault and the guy has to come back and correct it.
Yeah.
It gets re-inspected for uh the proposal is thirty dollars.
Okay.
And again, these are the permit fees that would be um charged for an online application, paper fees would be five dollars higher.
Right, right.
We've done two hundred and forty-three um online permits since, then that's total. Plumbing, gas, electric, and residential, commercial.
Right.
Uh, since February twentieth, when we instituted the the program, and we've done one paper permit, so.
Do you think you're getting more permits now because it's easier?
You know, I suspect so. It's a gut feeling, at this point, it's hard to evaluate.
I mean, you see more coming in that that you didn't see before, or were just busier anyways, because maybe the economy's turning around a little bit somewhere?
I think that's.
Yeah.
Little bit of both, maybe.
Yeah.
You know, makes it easier, much easier for the the trades guys to just.
Oh, absolutely, go online at nine o'clock at night?
Yeah.
And be done with it.
Yep.
So really, the fees are just the first two pages here.
Yeah, that's it. And yeah, the only two exceptions I made um or I'm requesting uh was for commercial solar and uh re-inspections we already talked about.
So what is the, commercial solar would be the one across some potter mill going in as we speak?
Yeah.
In theory?
Right.
That's commercial solar, and what is the fee now? Uh, because we are in the, two of us were on the planning board back in the day when we went through that whole mess.
Yeah, two hundred dollars plus twenty-five cents per panel.
Okay.
And Westfield has a flat three hundred dollar fee.
No matter how many panels?
Yeah, no matter how many inspections, and that's kinda um.
Lot of inspection.
Yeah, big, big number of inspections, huge.
So you don't wanna do it that way?
Yeah, we've used the guy from Westfield to do all the inspections at the Goose Pond uh systems, and he's probably been out ten times on those.
Right, so you wanna, so that's not what you wanna.
Keep our our. Fee the way it is on that.
Okay. That's fine, I understand. Any thoughts, Russell?
No, I'm ready to make a motion.
Douglas?
No, I agree with the solar piece.
That's I I was wondering where that lays.
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of the building inspector.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So you're happy with the permitting process?
Oh, yeah, I'm ecstatic, I got to do it as Carl pointed out today.
Do you feel that? I was just gonna say, not not to be, not to be a wise ass, but you know, did we, you were gone for a few weeks there and.
Yeah.
It seemed to run pretty good without you.
No, he's actually running it remotely.
I'm joking, I'm joking.
And well, of course, a lot of credit uh must be directed towards Melissa, she did an outstanding job in my absence. Keeping the, keeping things rolling and communicating with me, you know, through email and phone calls and stuff. She's great, she did it.
And I and I laughed because when she took that position, she's, she was, wants to be, I guess, accounting or in accounting someday and um and I said, geez, you know, just hold on, cause this, this not, you know, you don't, it's not the same day upstairs every day.
That's for sure.
Right, you know, you wouldn't get bored quickly, and it, and it, yeah, she seems to enjoy it. I mean, I was lucky enough to pay fines to Board of Health the other day because apparently, and can we adapt that system to them?
Yes, it can be expanded to virtually.
Any department?
It's the way to God.
We need to really look at that.
Doing some of his permits.
Cause he's got, he's gonna have an inspector position?
Yeah, so those, so how would we master all that, through you, is it?
No, it would be through the department head and you guys and the IT company, that's.
That's.
Full circle technologies.
Is that doing it?
Yeah.
So.
It would be separate from the permitting program.
Oh, I got you, so the software is available, it's in your system upstairs, of course.
None of it's here.
There's other modules.
It's on the cloud, okay.
Other modules that you add on for more money.
Right, oh, absolutely, don't worry about that, more money's right there, so they could expand on that system, not so much the building inspectors, but there's.
Yeah.
Other avenues.
Standalone things and.
Yeah. That, we should look at that down the road.
Yeah.
Maybe when you're chairman.
Yeah, that was one of the appealing parts of that program.
Oh, I agree, and I and I've had, you know, paying the fine at Board of Health the other day, cause I'm a seasonal business and I was closed and apparently I didn't open my mail. So they they've updated their policies and I got fined a hundred and fifty dollars for not being open and not having a permit in my business saying that I guess I was permitted, but I wasn't open yet, but that's okay, I've gotten over that, therapy works well.
See, if it was from the building department, you could pay it online, you wouldn't even have to.
Yeah, right, right, but the building department wouldn't let me open until I had my CO, which they drove in the day, my construction was done, I can promise you that. And and also the lady that does my assessment of what my value is, she was right behind me with a tape measure, and and measured fine, it was good, I'm happy, thank God for knee walls. But I did have a lengthy talk with Board of Health and and you did get brought up as far as, I think that is a technology way to go, because there's so much they do that could be easily done online.
Oh, yeah.
You know?
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
And it might make it easier for the business owner too, to make, you know, when that thing emails you that your permits do and you just click through.
Oh, I would love that.
Renew it while you're.
While you're there.
Paying your other bills and doing your other stuff, it gets done.
But they don't have a real full-time secretary up there, they have some work with Melissa and then there's some work with a a helper they have, so I think that technology would clean up.
Absolutely.
Their issues that they sometimes have, depending on how busy they are.
Yeah, Melissa handles all the, almost all the paperwork that would be on a online system.
Yeah, that that would be a win-win.
Take up a lot less of her time.
Yep.
And then she could devote that to the building department and we could progress in other areas.
Yeah, we'll get right on that. All right, we're good, we voted?
Well, yeah, I was just gonna make a suggestion, Mr. Chairman.
Of course.
That why the building inspectors here is maybe would like to make a, you'd entertain a motion to accept our letter of understanding and vote on that right now since it's under all business.
Letter of understanding for.
For my contract.
For his uh, letter of understanding.
Well, we got him, we got him the new car, right? The new used car.
Damn right.
Is there a sticker on that car, do you have a seal on that yet?
Yes, no, I have no seals.
No, the town, the town account has been working with the local sign shop.
Okay.
On the street here.
I I.
To get a new.
I have issues when it comes to lettering of.
To get a new shipment of them, the the shipment that showed up was blurry.
Yes, I heard, okay.
There's a new shipment coming.
Quality control was effective.
And do you have holes in your fenders on that car? Yours does, right, you have a couple holes up front?
There's holes everywhere.
Sorry. I'll just stop, I'll I'll stop.
You had to poke the bear.
I understand.
You missed one spot with the tape.
No, I did it on purpose.
Where the light used to be, the spotlight on the dog like.
Oh, yeah, I never even looked there, yeah. Why do they take those off, don't you need one, I don't, they don't go on a new cruiser, they're they're stored somewhere.
I could use them when I go jacking.
Yeah. Oh, all right. Okay, so uh.
I'll make that.
Second his motion.
All right, all those in favor?
Please, aye.
Thank you, Art.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Glad to see you back.
Backing around.
We appreciate it very much.
Thanks, Carl.
Any problems, just talk to Carl. We'll be fine. All right. Be a long night. Building inspector, we did that payroll acknowledgement of payroll warrant one eight two eight dated five twenty-nine twenty-eight and the amount of two hundred and ninety-six thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty-five cents. Acknowledgement of payable warrant one eight two eight B dated six four eighteen and the amount of four hundred and forty-two thousand looks like ten dollars and seventy-two cents. We'll move on to the minutes, regular session minutes for five twenty-two eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And do you have executive session minutes? For five twenty-two eighteen.
Can you do the regular session as amended, please, I need to add a a dollar amount.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, I need a motion for May twenty-second, twenty eighteen, which is a Tuesday.
Second.
Motion was made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All right, now we're on the action items. Look at us, we're moving now, hmm. Wheels are spinning, that guy's got some beautiful cars out there.
I know it.
Yeah.
I don't know if that was the same guy.
Very uh, I I was, that was, that was pretty cool, I was worried because he was from Granville. And um, no, I just, I didn't, I've never heard of the name, so I didn't know his background, but these are some beautiful pieces, never mind the motorcycle stuff.
Noticed them before this year, I don't.
I was just gonna say that, yeah.
I hadn't noticed it before this year.
All right, so up first is a one-day beer, uh, one-day beer and wine license for the Wick Three Three Eight Promotions LLC. It's for the nationals, um, it has been signed off by.
Yep.
Mr. Landis, and there's a, you guys all have copies of it. That's our normal routine, right, they haven't added any or anything?
Nope, it's actually down VIP, chances are on to this year.
Oh, I got you.
So moved, second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'll abstain, I do some work down there at times, so I'd like to stay out of that. Okay. Nope, look at this, next up is another uh one-day beer and wine license for Wally Park, Road Dealery Club Concerts on the Green. And they're looking for three one-day licenses, we can do that, right? Three in all, yep, beautiful. All right, so the dates we're looking at are uh seven eleven eighteen, eight fifteen eighteen, and it looks like eight eight eighteen. That's a number you gotta play.
Fathers do.
Which ones?
In some countries.
Oh, thank you, because I wasn't aware of that, that was coming up. All right, and it looks like they're Wednesday nights, it's gonna be from six to ten BM to ten PM. There will be a light fee, no.
No.
Okay, nope, that's fine, I'm just reading out loud. Robert Fox says the one who, applying form. Oh, this is icy, this is a parking wreck, oh, this is cool, I never saw that before. All right, so I need a motion for this?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And are we, uh officer to be determined at the time of event if necessary? So we're aware, okay? If those seniors get restless, we're gonna call in the police. Wonderful. All right, we should probably sign these, huh? Just, that's my fault. I'm new. Due to my Alzheimer's, I don't remember three years ago, so it works out well.
Yeah, one more.
Well, yeah, I just, I just didn't wanna get, Cindy keeps glaring at the papers.
She does that all the time.
Cross it off?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, sorry. That's, sorry, thank you, Carl, catching that. Hey, look at this, got one more. All right, so we have a one-day liquor license for the Russ Fox Comedy Hour. considers dry humor, he's gonna wear a pantsuit, all right, and that's uh at the um, it is actually at Southwood Rec Center.
My wife just texted, she can't make it.
She cannot make it, okay, that's too bad, because she she's a hoop when she gets laughing, or glaring, either way.
Mr. Chairman, this is actually the sixteenth.
Okay, I'm sorry, it's for six sixteen eighteen, and that's probably Father's Day somewhere too.
That's Father's Day weekend.
Oh, it's Father's Week, oh, getting close, look at that.
And this is a fundraiser for the Southwood Recreation Center to do roof repairs, building is almost fifty years old and in order to continue providing uh the uh youth programs, we need to repair the roof.
Wonderful, uh no picture of who the headliners are?
It was in the thing, I saw it somewhere, not here.
So is it uh, since um you must be speaking on behalf of a rec center, is it for adult comedy, is it children comedy?
No, this is unfortunately for adults.
Unfortunately, well.
Uh, because that's the reason for the liquor license.
Gotcha.
And uh the doors will open at seven, the show starts at eight, we have some major headliners from Boston and New York. Uh, it is a, gonna be a fun night, a great Father's Day uh thing to do. And um public's invited and we hope to have a full house.
So you're looking for like uh groups or just, um, cause at Mother's Day, I get, my business gets a lot of moms, because they're, you know, the moms force their children to bring them out. I've noticed on Father's Day that dads just wanna be alone.
But you aren't gonna believe this.
I'm I'm not.
The tickets are regularly fifteen dollars each.
Right.
But if you get a table, no, a table of six.
Right.
Only sixty dollars.
Wow.
Where can you get entertainment like that, I mean, major headliners?
Major.
Major.
Just not on my paper today, but they're major.
Major.
Okay. Wonderful, so I'll make that motion.
I I can't help but second it after that.
All those in favor?
Shit, dick.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain.
After all that.
No officer needed, I don't have that either in front of me.
If they get rowdy.
If they get rowdy, same thing. We'll have them circle the building.
One narrative.
Yeah, I know, that usually is. So we'll sign it. What day is that, though, that's a Saturday night?
Saturday night.
And Father's Day is Sunday?
Sunday.
Okay. Table sixty bucks?
Sixty bucks, it's.
Alright, put me in for a table.
You got it.
Take a check?
Yep.
Ooh.
Gotta get it all in. Alright.
Get two tables then if you're writing a check.
I could pay after the show, right?
Right.
Okay, board members committee assignments.
Yeah, when you reorganized, we did not get to that point last week. We may also, if the board could also consider when it's, um, creating the ad hoc open space committee, that if one of its board members wants to be on the open space committee.
Okay. We need to do this tonight?
Well, the LEPC and the Capcom are usually straightforward.
Alright, and I'm always on Capcom, right?
I nominate Joe for Capcom then.
Wonderful.
Yep.
You're doing a great job over there. Who's usually on LEPC?
Doug has been doing a tremendous job.
Has he? Alright, so Doug it is.
Still hasn't got my Humvee though.
Well, you know, takes time. And it looks like, uh, Russ is in charge of the two-hundred-and-fiftieth already.
Oh, yeah.
That's okay.
And I don't mind helping out in the open space. What is the, what's the last one?
Lake LLP?
It's LP, it's supposed to be.
Is that liquid petroleum or something? That's where we get propane?
I wasn't on that previous.
Yeah, you're, you're meeting with Melissa.
Yeah, but I didn't know I was officially.
It's not a committee.
Oh, oh, oh. Oh, 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 that's just an update on that.
You have continuity over that issue.
Oh, I got it.
Right.
Okay.
It's, it should be LTV.
Alright.
Right, and is anything else Doug's in charge of? Is he the, what's he the liaison for, too?
Uh, I think him and Mark has finished the marijuana thing, so I think he's done.
Okay.
Don't put it like that.
No, no.
It's not done yet.
No, it's not. You're absolutely right. It's heading in that direction.
Committee.
There's been.
Only committees done yet.
Right. Okay, so we're set with this?
Right.
Alright.
So Russ, Russ will be the, do you want, you wanna be on the open space?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we'll throw Russ on open space, second, so moved, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Alright, authorized chair and CAO to handle summer, seasonal, and part-time employment agreements.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Largo West LLC, long yard Laurel property APR and cold air restrictions. Oh, thank you. Who was that poor guy? Oh, that was, um, I'm not even gonna break it up. I remember.
For another, you know, the other API that's coming, so.
Yep, so we need a motion?
Yep, and there's pages. Do you have the tabs to sign?
I do have tabs, yeah.
Motion for the chair to sign, or is it motion for?
I think you, you all can sign it.
Yeah, board of selectmen.
Yep, you all can sign it.
So I need a motion for the.
Page twenty at the bottom, just say page one.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Twenty, and it looks like page twenty-one is not a republic. Okay.
Yeah, twenty-one will, will be.
Just checking.
There you go.
Thank you.
Took a year to train me. It's gonna take a couple of weeks.
I'll never get trained.
He's already been through this one.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it was three years ago.
I'm learning to not fight the system, that's what I can tell you. Because all I did was bucket last time around.
Right.
Yeah. Oppressing. Alright, five A.
Yeah, when we did the adjustments for, uh, fiscal year eighteen, uh, they did not include part-time dispatch pay, so we the fire, uh, excuse me, the police chief had pointed that out to us.
Okay.
They are regularly scheduled people.
Yeah, so have we done it in the past?
Um, he, he wasn't sure if we had done it in the past, but we should have been doing it in the past. Because they are regularly scheduled people, and usually people who didn't get it in the past were either, uh, board secretaries with somewhat irregular hours and seasonal and temporary people didn't get it, and these are regularly scheduled people.
And they are.
Eleven hundred bucks, right.
No, and that, and that's fine. So is there any other people we need to worry about under this frame and structure?
Yeah, that was, that was something I had the town accountant look into, and this is what she had come forward with.
This is the only issue we have.
Right.
Okay. Um, I met with David over it, you know, and I actually talked to dispatch about it, too, and, you know, same thing, like, what are you talking about?
It's fair, it has to do with being similarly situated.
Yes, and they are scheduled to work. It's not, you know, posted for a part-time position. That moves or anything like that. Thank God, I ain't gotta pay back.
It's not like a floater, it is regularly scheduled.
It's regularly scheduled. So I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's sign that just to be safe.
What's that time of the year again, isn't it?
And then can we make a note of this moving forward, so it doesn't come up again? I mean.
Yep, I will be there.
Okay. Six A, request use of DPW facility for annual communication exercise.
Charlie's twenty-four hour second.
All those in favor?
Alright, just remember to check in.
When is the date of that? Did he give it to you? If you guys will let me finish, I could've told you. Uh, June twenty-third and twenty-fourth, it shows. Twenty eighteen. On June twenty-third through the twenty-fourth.
So make sure you all stop in and sign the book.
Yes.
Very important.
Make us aware of that the week before, that would be great.
Especially the US Chair of LEPC.
Is this the first year it's over at DPW, Randy?
No.
It's been there several years.
I, I haven't gone. That's, that's my fault. Okay. Authorized library summer page posting.
Yeah, that's a, that's a regular thing to do this time of year.
Alright, I need a motion to.
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, review. I'm gonna say that wrong, right? Capcom, Concom, Concom request. Coordinator stipend for auto slash cellphone use.
Yeah, this is something they did not raise during the budget process, but it's something they want that would be similar for their inspectional services to be, um, treated the same way that the, um, health inspector has, has structured under.
But this can come out of their revolving account?
Come out of their revolving account.
Right. I, I'd make a motion to.
Who? So we're talking one phone?
Yeah.
Review for Concom, request for coordinator stipend for auto and cellphone use. And what's the auto use?
And you know?
No, I just, I'm at.
Well, he does field, he does inspections.
So is it mileage, then?
Well, no, you don't, you just, it's not a mileage issue.
Okay.
Under the.
It's a stipend, right?
Mileage issue is a certain separate reimbursement.
Sure, so both of these are a stipend?
Right.
Do we know what that stipend is?
Uh, they're proposing it right here.
Oh, I'm sorry, next page. I didn't pick up my packet early enough, so I apologize.
I'd make a motion table, Mr. Chairman, so we can go over this in a little more detail and see if it afflicts any other people.
Right, that, that's, that was my, right. Is this the only one, or is there other issues that we haven't been addressing?
Yeah, this, this should've been brought up during the budget process, you know? You know, it's, it's just, and I know we're all volunteers and stuff like that, but I mean, you're bringing this up in, you know, after town meeting.
Two weeks after the town meeting.
So that'd be my motion.
Um, your motion to table for what purpose?
To review.
Okay.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
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 Review of summer schedule. Nine A. Thoughts?
I, I wrote down a few thoughts.
Okay.
Wanna, I know we're meeting June eleventh. And then I thought that we would go on our regular summer schedule. Unless we have a hearing post already that I don't know. Meet every other.
Cindy, do we have anything?
I've got four hearings out here coming up.
What dates?
For what dates? Um, I haven't done a year.
Okay, so there's nothing on June nineteenth right now.
Right.
Yeah, I won't.
Okay, so it's June eleventh.
So I, I had skipping June nineteenth, July third, July seventeen, July thirty-first, August fourteenth, August twenty-eighth. I had a meeting September fifth. It's a Wednesday.
Cause it was the twenty-eighth, right, right?
And then skipping the tenth and the twenty-fourth. And then I also would suggest to the board that since we made an issue of, uh, start times being too early for people with other, uh, other boards in town, that perhaps instead of five-thirty, we consider six or six-thirty.
Well, yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem anytime you don't, but Douglas.
Six o'clock works better.
How's your schedule? You're one of the working men, and can't sneak out all the time. Is six okay with you?
Yeah, I, I mean, we, we did make an issue with another board, so.
No, I agree. I just, yeah.
And it's, it's for the summer.
Right.
You know?
If we may just extend this one more week out, I don't know, because of the biggie.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
We get kinda goofy there, here in my world.
So we don't have a calendar? Oh, yes, we do.
Sure we do.
Take care of that right now.
I did get invited back, so that's the good news.
Biggie, the same hours or same?
Oh, yeah, it's, uh, about five AM to midnight.
No, I mean, uh, when does the biggie's start now?
Um, where are we? September, so it starts the fifteenth, and it goes till, yeah.
So we're not meeting the twenty-fourth, so we wouldn't meet again until, uh, October first? So the biggie should be over?
It's over, right.
Okay.
October what, first?
Yep, that's over.
So that works, right?
Yep, yeah, perfect.
Okay, perfect.
Alright.
Is that good, Doug, or?
You got any, any issues with vacations or anything? You're okay?
It comes up.
Well, and we can adjust, this is just a. Do you want that?
Yeah, you're right, we can always do that, or if we need to do a work session.
Right.
We can always do that.
I don't remember.
So Sandra, you're good? We have everything?
Alright.
Certainly.
So now we have a city-town owner agreement, four-twenty-six Main Road, Granville, Mass. PBDD. Friday, PVPC.
Yep, you just authorized the chair to sign that off.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Did we, Mr. Chairman, I wanna.
Yeah.
Speak to that. I wanna cancel it because I only had like one answer on Friday. But I got four or five today, and everybody's on around two hundred dollars. Unless you guys feel that you wanna.
It was put in that agreement, Charlie, it doesn't need.
Oh, okay.
Doesn't need to be touched.
Okay?
Okay. Understood. Alright. So then I have in front of me a chapter, so where's the chairman getting involved? No, or we're okay?
It should be July.
Chapter ninety, project request? Okay, that's fine.
Well, actually, which, what is that for? You're an old business, so here you go.
Yeah, but this isn't even old business, this is.
It's new.
Yeah, this, um, environmental punch list. Preliminary estimate, engineer construction, this is, um, uh, how do you say that? Shootleaf?
Shirtlift.
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 Right, that is, that's a two-action item.
Yep.
You're gonna do, um, the approval of the apparent low bidder.
Yep.
To award the contract, and then this would be the balance of funds to fund the whole contract, including construction oversight through deal engineering, as well as a contingency fund, because when we had originally contemplated the project, we had eight twenty-five, as the earlier tie-in bond estimate, we put five hundred from the grant, three hundred thousand at special town meeting.
Yep.
And we said that we would go back and revisit the issue with the, uh, the balance being local or chapter ninety funds. And that's where we are now.
Right.
So you have to both look at the, uh, the bid package.
Right, engineer construction.
And that's in, that's in, Cindy, that's in another section up here. The bids themselves, the, uh, the minutes of the opening, though. Yeah, so do. Right, right here inside, Joe.
Right here, right here. I'm sorry. Don't worry, keep going.
Right there.
This one.
Nope.
Oh, keep going, Mr. Diddy.
Oh, boy, go.
Yep. So, uh, lowest bidder looks like is ET and Alcorp. Out of Stone Mass, six hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
Quite a range between the lowest and the highest.
Yeah.
Over two hundred thousand.
Yep. And we're short, what, about eighty thousand? Was that the number between the continia and?
Yeah, because you, your, uh, engineering contract was a hundred and sixteen thousand.
Right.
That you've been paying out of the three hundred.
Yep.
So in order to go forward with this project, we need to, uh, award the, um, the contract and then sign that chapter ninety.
Okay. And this is gonna, this is, is the theory to get this done before school starts?
Absolutely.
Okay, 'cause the whole busing issue?
This whole con, part of the bid specs is predicated on closing the road for those nine critical days in August, and making sure that the work is completed before the public school year begins and the buses roll.
Okay. So in the end, we didn't save any, I mean, we were going back and forth for a while there, right? Whether we close it, don't close it? And if there was savings or no savings? So that's all been worked out?
Yeah, we got the best, best price and the best.
Right, and you're comfortable with this? Sure?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, the project, Randy, good luck.
Now we need a motion for the eighty thousand?
Right.
I'll make that motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
So there'll be a contract at some point, so this is the board, uh, ought to write the chair to sign off on the contractual agreement with the, uh.
ETL?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
So Cindy, you got three votes there.
Alright, so I need to, we need to sign this?
Yep, you have several places.
All of us?
Mm-hmm.
Should be four signatures, three should be.
Okay.
Two copies. So that means I have to train my daughter how to get back to the house for those nine days.
She's not here.
Yeah, but when she's working at Loomis Street.
I don't know, she'll probably be going, she'll probably be gone to your mass.
Oh, by, by the end of August, yeah.
So, Randy, four signatures are needed?
Go up honey pot road.
Two, two copies, two forms. Yeah, I know that. There's four, yeah, we'll sign four.
Okay, so the yellow one says select board up front here. Where would you like me to sign? Anywhere?
Anywhere, yeah.
Oh, I got you, that's fine.
Anywhere.
Not under state aid engineer.
No, you're right, you're right.
Thank you.
One, two, three.
Thank you, sir. I don't wanna screw it up on you.
Actually, if they do enough of a burn, she'll cry jumping.
Yeah.
Would that equal not to the chick she?
Probably make it.
Yeah, okay.
Quick enough that written in the specs.
Wait a minute, is it the light equals? That's the one that you wanna damage?
What's the one with the check engine light issues?
Yeah, right.
That's the one that's gotta go first.
You know, you gotta find a dependable vehicle, like, uh, a new Ford one fifty.
Yeah, how's that working out?
We're just gonna, I'll sit on.
Just on anything, yeah, just sign it.
Yeah, just a hundred.
Just sign it.
You can put it underneath it.
In, in the, in the ellipsis of the J was where I'll probably fit mine.
Yeah.
Alright.
Just make sure there's four times your sign.
Yeah.
Underneath the J.
It's like a signature bigger than life.
Most of the time. Ah, there you go.
I left your room, Doug.
Okay, so the building inspector we took care of. Um, Congamon Road project updates and agreement approvals. I have social media, social media.
That was in the, uh, blue, it was in the blue section. I don't know how, it wasn't really, uh, I can't remember, but it was in the.
Blue.
Meeting packets section.
Okay. And basically, it's just an update?
Oh, uh, that's another one where Randy is looking for, um, authorization by the board to have the chairman sign a, uh, contract amendment with tie-in bond for additional engineering services and construction oversight for the Mass DOT one-six-eight project.
Yep.
And to supplement that project with additional monies from the chapter ninety account for that engineering, for that engineering, additional Mass DOT permitting requirements they had to do.
Yeah.
Changes in regulations in oversight. And so that'll be another chapter ninety authorization that you're gonna have to vote.
For a hundred and eight thousand?
Hundred, what was it, Randy?
That was the first one, that was for the, um, design changes that went away.
Okay, so what am I making a motion for, how much?
Says it at the bottom, the second page, the bottom of the second page.
Well, I see twenty-nine thousand.
Second.
The other second.
The other second page, you moron. Alright.
There are, there are two contracts, one is the one oh eight for design.
Okay, so I need a motion for the one oh eight for the design.
One thirty-nine thousand five hundred for construction phase services.
So total is one thirty-seven five.
Correct.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Those filled out, but those aren't filled out.
I did not fill those out, no.
Alright.
It's authorized the chairman to sign.
Right.
Right. So do I need to sign them now, or when they're filled out?
I gotta fill them.
No, he's gotta fill them out.
Probably when they're filled out.
You'll sign the MOU, and then you can come in and sign the chapter ninety authorization, and we can stamp the other members' names to it.
Absolutely. Okay, that's all set. Alright, electrical inspector fees. Are we set with that?
Yep.
Alright, McDonald's grand opening, I've heard nothing.
It's coming along.
Oh, yeah, no, they're doing, they're doing.
Is that, is that date firm now?
That's actually, I haven't. You know what, I have his card, I'll call him.
Told me the date.
Okay, so the dates firm. I hear the burgers are, are hotter. According to the commercial, right, they're hotter?
Well, I think, I'm thinking to be not frozen and fresh going.
That's what it said.
I didn't see that, I saw they were hot.
That's like Five Guys does that.
Hot, yeah.
That means they're gonna go five bucks.
Yeah. Okay. So next I have the ad hoc open space.
Yeah, you tabled it last week.
And recreation, recreation, well, what do we table for?
I don't know, I think, I think we're, we're still waiting, right, Concom is.
They're voting out tonight.
Okay.
They're rep tonight.
Beautiful.
They're not meeting tonight, they didn't have a quorum, so.
They didn't have a quorum?
They don't have a quorum tonight.
They didn't have a quorum last week either, I thought.
Alright, I'll put that off. Snow and ice policy work session, we gotta come up with a date for that?
Yep, you're gonna have a work, and then you were gonna, you and Randy were gonna do a few things too, Joe.
We'll look at some of these streets.
That's on the design standards.
Yep. Alright, so. So we'll, we'll push that forward, and I will call you tomorrow, we'll come up with a date to meet. Your place, mornings work best. Okay. Two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary meeting.
Cindy was looking at some dates so that we could have a meeting in June and kick it off.
Okay. We're in June now, right?
Right.
Yeah. What you come up with for dates?
It was either the eleventh or the nineteenth, I'm gonna say, it was a Wednesday, right?
Well, no, the eleventh we're meeting, so.
The eleventh is a Monday.
Right, I think it's, we said, uh.
Week, uh, we said the week of the eleventh or the week of the nineteenth.
Tuesday or a thirteenth.
Is that what you said, yeah?
Yeah.
So thirteenth?
And just bear in mind, Ben is sending me dates tomorrow.
Do we all have to be here for that, or is that, is that the committee?
I think that's, I can just take care of it.
Alright, 'cause I can't be here on the thirteenth.
Yeah, well, I, I don't know if we can get, put together that quick, 'cause we're gonna have to use the news media to.
I requested a business listing from Mike McMahon.
Okay.
And I haven't gotten that back.
And we should send something to the school and to all the organizations in town to at least have, suggest that they have a representative there.
Yeah, that's, that's just a kickoff meeting, Doug, for Russ and that committee, that's gonna be different than the dates that Ben is gonna be giving us on that social media policy.
Alright.
I would do it for the week of the eighteenth, Cindy, you know.
Yeah.
Give yourself some time.
Yeah, because we'll have to.
And that is to put together a committee, I'm assuming?
Well, it's to invite representatives from as many people as we can.
To organize.
Right.
So anyone?
And then Russ will bring back the results of that group.
So anyone that has sent the letter and should be there?
Yeah, I'll contact them.
Okay, perfect, that's us.
Yeah.
My people's calling me, and I was like, send the letter, Randy, and they'll, they'll look at it.
Yeah.
Okay, so social media, we're waiting for Ben?
Well, uh, Ben is gonna give us the, the dates on that, but you have tonight both tracked and untracked edits for the second reading of the policy that Ben has done the revisions.
Okay.
So they're right, they're here, so if you could, you wanna go through those.
Yep.
You'll be able to see what you voted on.
Okay.
In the top right-hand corner, it's the tracked and untracked.
Correct.
So you can open it up. You can see precisely what he's changed since the last time you read it. And he had done that with, uh, consultation from Labor Council, too.
Alright, so which one is the changed one, the tracked or the untracked?
Well, tracked shows you what, um, if you open it, if you flip the page, it shows you exactly what words changed.
I gotcha.
And then, so when you're okay with those, then you'll just vote to adopt the, the untracked one, because then that will be the one that Cindy puts tonight's, um, adoption date.
Okay. Purpose of the policies are by management.
Basically, Mr. Chairman, it does, it gives us a good, uh, start, and then if we see that we need to modify anything or run into any issues, uh, down the road, like anything else, we can always review it and tweak it if we had to.
Now, was my understanding that we were gonna have a, a, a meet and greet over this with?
Those are the dates that Ben is sending them.
Okay.
Russ had requested that in a previous meeting.
Right, that's what I was thinking, yeah.
It's gonna be reappointing people, and people have just taken office, it's a good time to.
Yep.
Catch as many people as possible. Then eventually have them sign that, they'd acknowledge it, just like they have the other.
Right, this will be the annual signers, right.
Right. Any questions, so?
Nope. So since, once you adopt this, then we can, we can give copy to the, to the clerk's office, and they can include this in their package.
Right.
Want that motion out?
Yep.
Yeah.
So moved.
Move to it down.
Do a second?
I will second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, boys, get rid of your Facebook accounts. You want the sign?
No.
No.
No. I got a nod from the clerk, he knows the best. Okay. That's all, it's in my packet here. With the Brooke, uh.
Yep, police, uh, fire chief.
Yeah, I got that, the F, Deputy Chief finalist and schedule interviews.
I was fortunate enough to sit through that process with the, uh, the chief.
Yep.
Some of the members of the command staff. The assessment center people.
So that was a one-day thing, huh? Or that was just a one day that they were here, there was more research and stuff done ahead of time, right?
Right.
For that dollar amount, I thought it'd be longer than one day.
Very lengthy, intense process.
Yeah. Okay. So we need to come up with some dates?
So your, um, preference was, you know, we have, we were bringing the top three candidates here, and I would imagine you'll, you'll want to make sure that you have a, a good number of questions, each one of you?
Yep.
Yeah, this is very important.
This is an extremely important decision. Yes.
Don't. Sure.
Okay. So, any dates in mind?
Well, let's see, he was, you know, I mean, the, uh.
He asked for the next week or the week after.
Yeah, but you're not meeting the week after, so. We could do the week after that even.
Eighteenth? We're not meeting the week eighteen.
The week after that is the twenty.
Fifth.
Week after that is the twenty-fourth, uh, twenty, twenty-sixth you're meeting.
Tuesday? When's the national?
Do it to twenty-sixth.
Yeah, that's okay, now, now, I'm available. Okay.
Wait a minute, it's an applicant.
So you want June twenty-sixth?
Yeah. That gives them time to reach out and.
Right, and these are gonna be, you know, how many questions each and how many minutes each?
Yeah.
Which are preferences, 'cause that's gonna drive the agenda.
Is it gonna be in the auditorium, or is it gonna be in here?
Yeah, we can put it in the auditorium, it's not a problem.
Or just be ready, just in case we actually have.
Yeah, we can do it that way.
If half the fire department shows up, then we don't have enough room.
Right.
So.
Not a problem.
How many questions? I would give them fifteen minutes each, yeah.
Right, so this.
Taking three questions each, four questions each.
You think fifteen minutes is enough?
No, but they'll wait.
No, they'll, yeah.
You know?
Better in case somebody's.
Four questions each would be way more than fifteen minutes.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
So half hour each?
Half hour each. You know, start at five-thirty?
Douglas?
Sure.
Five forty-five.
Five forty-five.
Give me a cushion.
No, today was just a bad day, no, man, come here.
Alright, five-thirty, okay.
Five forty-five. Whatever.
Alright, and how long each?
Half hour.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Because we're gonna have.
Two each.
Give them an opportunity to speak.
Right, I think you could do three with thirty minutes.
Yeah, we're gonna do three each. Yeah. And. What's the date? Now, you said the twenty-sixth. Okay, today is what date?
Fourth.
The fourth, I want the questions in by next week. Because if there's any duplicates, I wanna know ahead of time, I don't wanna ask the same question six different ways to Sunday. So the attorney approves the questions? So let him know if any of these are, if they're just too similar, bounce them, just tell us, Joe, I need another question. 'Cause it just, I mean, we sit here and we ask the same way, six different ways. So, it's all good, but let's just.
Give enough draft questions, that won't happen.
Okay, there you go, so we, four questions each, and then we'll pick three out of each, so. You know, you.
You don't get to see it, it's blind.
Right, so we just get four questions, and then you look at those questions ahead of time. The Labor Council, and pick three each that don't match exactly, without saying it a different way. You know?
Okay.
Right? Because that's, I just, I feel bad sometimes, we, lieutenant's position, we kinda ask the same questions in one form or another, but yet they were the same. And I look at you like, didn't I already answer that? Well, yeah, you did, now answer it again, and make sure it's not the same. So.
Well, that's part of the test.
I, I get that, and I get that, so two can be a duplicate. But that's it. Okay, what else under? Under old business?
Yeah.
Well, we got stuff in the back, too, right, you have under new business, are you still under old business?
Old business.
So, um, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Couple of weeks ago, I believe, Carl, myself, Mr. Grinnell's. Chief, Ricari, incoming chief bishop. And Mr. Clark met with the first selectmen in the entire town hall staff of the town of Suffield.
Entire staff?
Pretty much, I didn't think, God help, if anything was going on, 'cause the fire chief was there, police chief was there, conservation chair was there, basically matched, they matched us person for person.
Absolutely.
Um, to talk about the LPP, uh, the local permit process for, uh, Congamont Lake. There seemed to be, the initial request for a meeting was that there was some pushback from residents of, of Suffield paying a, a fee to the town of Southwick for their docks, moorings, boats, buoys, I think that's all the categories that there are. Um, the net result of the, of the discussion is, is that, um, they're still gonna ask the people of Suffield that own property, that abut the great pond. And Mr. Clark and Mr. Grinnell's are going to let Ms. Mack know what the approximate dollars should have been brought in under that program, and Suffield's gonna write us a check. And we are gonna draft an MOU between the two towns to codify that. So, rather than have the town of Southwick go collecting door-to-door from the residents of Suffield, we're gonna figure out an amicable number and have the town of Suffield just write us a check for that amount of money, which seemed like a very reasonable compromise. That achieves the goal of the LPP and gets everybody.
Each individual homeowner still fills out their LPP.
Right, but then, and then we'll get, the actual check would come from the town of Suffield.
And there was discussion about maybe, uh, for such a aggregate thing, maybe there would be a potential discount.
I started at three million, and Dick was somewhere around ten grand, so somewhere in the middle will wind up.
Right, and I'm sure everybody realized that you didn't wanna give them a lesser amount of money than the Southwick people are paying.
It's based on.
The rate is the rate, yeah.
The rate's the rate, right? We weren't looking to give them a discount.
Right.
But there was some pushback about. From the Suffield residents that didn't participate in the pro, they weren't getting the participation they wanted from the Southwick side, from the folks on the Suffield side, so this looks to be a win-win if, if the money works out. No, you're correct, no, there's not a discount for Suffield, per se, no, I get it, no, 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 no.
No, not the person, for an aggregate.
Right, right.
Because it's, it's ga, it's to gain an increased compliance.
Correct, right.
Correct.
I didn't want anybody in the newspaper to say something and.
No, 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 no.
Right.
No, it was a very amicable meeting, and it was, uh, it was good to get everybody together and get on the same page, 'cause I think that there was a lot of misconception about the program itself and where the, where the border is, and, um. We didn't, we did not have to call up the militia, we told them to hold tight.
How many houses are there really involved?
You know what, that was one of the interesting questions that Mr. Grinnell's owes us an answer for.
Oh, no answer.
Well, there's also, well, there's two things, you have the actual number of properties that abutters that could have it, and then you actually have the number that actually have one.
Right.
Very true, right.
So there's two different universes.
And then, and then there's the boats.
Oh, this, we have area shops.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
He had, oh, he had one that was, I think it was actual size. But there was a, a ton of side-blank discussion.
I had Dennis prepare a motion.
Sure.
Maps.
But it was a very productive meeting.
Yeah, 'cause you've gotten nowhere before, so it's huge.
It's been going on for so many years.
Yeah.
Since the eighties, so, thank you.
Yeah.
Your hard work. A gratitude to, uh, First Selectman Mack as well, 'cause she was really the one who.
Sure.
Spearheaded it, said, look, this is just silly that we keep going back and forth with this thing. Let's just put something together between the two communities as a memorandum of understanding.
Right, so town council reviewing that.
Council's doing it, 'cause it's between two states, so.
Sure.
But it should be beneficial to everyone, 'cause it achieves what, what everyone was trying to do.
Right, globally.
Well.
Yeah.
Within the two states, our globe of Suffield and Southwick, yeah.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Any other old business?
No.
Alright. All I have is I've been working on a design that I'm gonna appropriate to our chief of police for this vehicle, and basically it's, um, it's nothing, it's reflective vinyl on the bottom and the fire department logo on the back window. Whether we do the Southwick Fire on the side, or we don't, and the reflective vinyl actually matches the vehicle, which you can't see in, of course, these pictures. So at least it's something on the car that says it is Southwick's vehicle. Doesn't jump out and say it's the chief of the police or anyone else. But, uh, the townspeople will know it is a town vehicle going down the road. That's what I'm gonna show them, it's no big deal, I'm just letting you know ahead of time. Should you get any feedback, uh, I'll hear about it. Anything under new business?
Well, let's see, what do we have here? We have, uh.
We'll start at this end of the room first.
Alright, thank you.
CAO Emeritus, Steinhardt?
Well, I had DPW bids listed, but Randy doesn't have any first yet, he's reviewing them, he just opened them up. Uh, selectmen goals and objectives, we do have the sheets there, so if you want, you should probably just, uh, pull that out from your sheet, review it, and see how you would like to edit that form for next week.
Sure.
Fair enough?
Fair enough.
Sorry, Mr.
That's okay.
Russ?
The, uh, only thing I had, Mr. Chairman, is we have an invitation from Westfield Bank, who is hosting the, uh, Greater Westfield Chamber of Commerce, uh, June thirteenth, it's a Wednesday, and I was told, uh, to invite the board.
Okay.
Didn't you just schedule the two-fiftieth thing for that night?
No, no.
Okay.
Push it off to the weekend, eighteen.[1613.32]